Just kidding, I was talking to y'all. How y'all doing over here? Oh, mine's right here. Dr. Jordan was having technical difficulties.
Okay, you're ready.
All right, thank you. All right, again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending, uh, tonight's meeting. I, hold on one second, let me find, where are we? We're coming back in from closed session at 6:50 PM. We will do, uh, a roll call. We have all board members present, inclusive of two student representatives. And there were no actions taken on closed session items. Uh, moving right along to the pledge of allegiance, uh, Dr. Jordan?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We apologize for the delay tonight. Uh, tonight is Charter Oak High School night, so it's my pleasure to introduce the principal of Charter Oak High School, Mr. Matt Doltz.
Well, thank you, President McGuire, members of the board, Dr. Jordan, and executive cabinet. As always, uh, thank you for the opportunity to have a little chance to brag about a few things, uh, students, community members, as well as the programs that I have the privilege of supporting at Charter Oak High School. The first couple of students that, uh, I'd like to call up are Jacob and Moses Calderon. Come up. So Moses is currently a sophomore at CO and could honestly be given kind of the honorary title of, of greeter. Cause he, he'll, he's always out there at the gate saying hi to everybody, and I mean everybody. Every morning, he waits for school to start. He greets everybody with a fist bump and pure enthusiasm, and it's a great way to start my morning. Um, cause I know I'll, I'll head down there just if I know I want to start my day off right. Um, Moses absolutely loves school, his friends, his teachers, and the rest of the staff on campus is just a pleasure to be around. He even has become an official groundskeeper, working with our athletic attendant, Mr. Caballero, to prep our fields for competition. I'm looking forward to seeing him do that again. But I'd be remiss if I didn't include Jacob in tonight's presentation as well, because Jacob kind of takes a backseat and, and he doesn't make any complaints, but he's, he's always there for his brother. I love talking to him as well, because just seeing how he's progressed through and getting ready for graduation at the end of the year. Never complains about the responsibilities accepted, and he's always humble about the role he plays in his brother's life. Yet, more often than not, you'll see him accompanying Moses to extracurriculars, sporting events, they're always in the stands rooting the teams on, just, I'm, I'm truly impressed with how he represents his family. So, without further ado, I'd like to hand things over to Jacob and Moses Calderon.
Hello, everybody. Can we all stand, please? Okay, put your right hands over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Guys, hold on.
Take a picture with your boot. Take one, go up there.
Thank you, all. Jacob and I just, you have enough to take a photo. Congratulations. All right, one, two, three. One, two. Congratulations. And big papa.
Papa.
Come on, big papa. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we will continue with Charter Oak celebration, so at this time, Mr. Doltz is going to introduce his superstar student.
All right. So it's my pleasure to introduce Lila Caston as CO's superstar student. Not only does Lila maintain excellent grades while taking courses in our rigorous IB program, but she also serves as our current ASP president. And, uh, in her spare time, Lila has, is a three-sport athlete, competing in softball, water polo, and she just recently completed a very successful season with her volleyball team. And, oh yeah, she's also crowned the 2024 homecoming queen as well. See? Uh, one thing that I love to see i- is that she has a constant fan club with her family, always present for every event that I ever see her mat. And so it's my pleasure to present to you our superstar student, Lila Caston. Yeah, you gotta go up there now, too.
Okay, next up, uh, Mr. Doltz will introduce his partner in education.
Well, this recognition is probably long overdue. John Espinoza and the Covina Sunrise Rotary, which is a little hidden joke, I always call it sunshine, an accident. Um, longstanding supporters of not just Charter Oak, but the entire Charter Oak community. If there is a major event taking place, John's there. If there's a board meeting or a committee being formed to make decisions, John's the first one to sign up for duty. In fact, he was the, one of three people to sign up to, to join the very first donuts with Doltz. And one of the other out of the three was my wife, so there wasn't much going on. He's a staple, and I cannot express my gratitude and appreciation toward him enough. It's the work of John and the Sunrise Rotary that guests pass through every time they enter Lou Ferrar Stadium. It's also because of them that two seniors are given the opportunity to get some nice clothes, a makeover, have their hairstyle, just so they can be prepared and comfortable at graduation. They've been, uh, really amazing supporters of our school and our community. So thank you to John and the Covina Sunrise Rotary for your constant support of our kids and our community.
Okay, next up, uh, as we have concluded the fall sports season, uh, Mr. Doltz has a couple of league champions to recognize, so, Mr. Doltz?
We do. I won't say too much, let coaches speak for this, but for those of you that don't know, this was our inaugural season for girls' flag football. Never done before, and it was a late team to form, because we had no idea we were going to have forty girls jump at the chance to, to hit each other hard, even though it's flag. Those girls are rough. Um, so I'd like to bring up our coaches, Alan and Ortiz, and they can introduce their players as well. But they did take home this year's league title for Valley Vista on their first ever attempt. We might look a little thin, because all of our athletes are multi-sports. We have some soccer players, some basketball players that are on the court tonight, so, yeah.
But, um, Coach Allen, this is, uh, my assistant coach.
Coach Ortiz.
Um, so we had our first, uh, inaugural season this year with our girls' flag football team. And kind of coming on the back end of the season, or actually to start the season off, we only had a total of nine games when most teams had played probably a whole year on us. Is in attendance tonight. Um, first, we'll start, we'll go from left to right, so Ms. Zoe Chavez. Also have Ms. Isabella Carmona. Kayla Lambert. Alexis Salgado. And Katie Myers. Uh, these are again, just a, uh, uh, we had about forty, forty total girls. Varsity and JV team. These were girls on our varsity team here that took us to the first round, and we look forward to having some of them back next year. Um, few will be leaving us, but, you know, we'll, we'll miss you, girls. But again, these are 2024 and 2025, uh, Val Vista League Champions.
Okay, board, why don't you go ahead and stay up there for a moment? Oh, wait, we have one more. I apologize. Mr. Doltz, you disappeared on me. You were messing my script up. And we also have our next sport, our boys' water polo team.
Yeah, I was just checking with Coach, because I don't see any of our players here, so we're running a little late. Cause we rolled right into girls' water polo.
Well, bring Coach up.
Danny Lee, who, uh,
Do you wanna wait?
Cheer with them, but, uh, yeah, congratulations, Coach. Thank you for representing CO the way you guys did this. Yep.
We're still in the league champs.
Can we just take a picture here? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I don't know.
Coach, are, is your team?
Yeah, some of them are showing up late. I'm, I'm not sure how many will be here. I think, we had our banquet yesterday, and I mentioned it, but I don't know how many total. I know that's like, couldn't tell you.
Well, let's get a pic.
Do it now, and then if they show up, we'll do it again.
Yeah.
Let's get a picture of Coach.
We will stay nimble.
Yeah, no. Don't do that to me. No, no, we're good. We got this. We got that. Hey, we're veterans. We got this.
One, two, three.
Don't model my four thirty to five o'clock time frame when everybody came to. I didn't get my quiet time. Okay, now, how about you stay up there for a moment? Uh, Charter Oak High School, thank you. We have another recognition we'd like to do. Uh, I'm gonna do this next one, so I'd like to embarrass Mr. Strikula. So Joey Strikula, if you could come up to the front for a moment. Um, the reason why we're asking Mr. Strikula to come up is that every year, the LA County Office of Education, uh, they oversee eighty school districts in the county. And out of the eighty school districts, they hand out cabinet member awards. And this year, Mr. Strikula was identified as the Los Angeles County Office of Education Cabinet Member of the Year for Student Services. He had the opportunity, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, to attend a ceremony to be honored. But there's three things I made notes on that I wanted to highlight with Mr. Strikula. And he's able to do these three things really well, because he was a successful high school principal, who was able to, to run what I call just another city. But more importantly, my observation is, Mr. Mr. Strikula, since he's been at the district in this role, is that he has established, uh, working with our schools and our principals and our teachers on getting kids into school to improve attendance. That's one area. And that's critical, because we know that kids don't learn unless they're in class. And if they're out more than ten percent of the year, fifteen, twenty percent of the year, that's gonna create some deficiencies. So Joey spearheads that with our school sites to make sure that is a high level of importance. The second thing that we've accomplished, I think, in the last four or five years, is Mr. Strikula has implemented a system for student enrollment, so that we're balancing enrollment, school by school. Uh, he oversees the District of Choice Program, so that we're able to bring new students to our district. And he takes that very seriously. It's a very precision type of activity that he has implemented. And everyone is really clear at the schools on how it works, and he monitors that daily. The third one, and this is just my opinion from my seat. Um, we've got really talented administrators, and I appreciate all the work that all of them do. Joey is probably the most talented person I've seen on problem solving and coming things to a resolution when there's conflict. When we have parents or we have issues that are taking place at a school site, I know that when I call Joey and ask him to, to set up a meeting, uh, it is resolved, and it's resolved at a high level and satisfaction to everyone, because he takes the time to listen. He takes the time to look at potential solutions. And our community trusts him when he says there's things that he's gonna do, or he's gonna have done at the schools, and it gets done. So when you look at that, this was a no-brainer why the county picked Joey to be our Cabinet Member of the Year. Mr. Strikula, congratulations. I appreciate you.
Okay, moving along to our student representative reports, uh, we have Logan Creighton from Arrow High School and Azuri Valentine from Charter Oak High School.
Madam President and members of the board, here's my report. End of grading period. We just ended the second grading period, and students that received green report cards, ninety percent attendance, or a twenty-five percent in, twenty-five percent attendance improvement will be getting a waffle brunch on December fourth. Students will also play a few holiday games with prizes at this event. Thanksgiving feast. The annual sunflower feast is tomorrow, November twenty-second, at ten forty-five AM. The entire student body will sit at one huge, long table to dine on traditional Thanksgiving food hosted by the sunflower staff. Field trip. Arrow High School is having a field trip to Warner Brothers Studios on December sixth. Students voted for this field trip and are really looking forward to it. Thank you, members of the board, for me being able to give my report. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Good evening, Madam President McGuire and Board of Trustees, Dr. Jordan and Executive Cabinet. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share all the amazing things that are happening at CO. For our Charter Oak Report, on Wednesday, November sixth, we held a blood drive, where students had the opportunity to be blood donors to someone in need. During the same week, we had an NCAA College Info Night, and the grading period ended. During the same week, oh, sorry. Our Charter Oak football season came to a close against Apple Valley High School on October eighth, and the, in the first round of the CIF playoffs. Our Charter Oak Theater Department presented the musical Anything Goes, and was for the weekends of November eighth through ninth and fourteenth through fifteenth. And here is my final fall sports update. Football ended with a score of eight and three record. Their league record was four and one. Volleyball went nineteen and seventeen, and their league was seven and three. They also made it to the CIF semifinals, as well as round two and the state playoffs. Boys' water polo ended with four and fourteen record, but were undefeated in league and brought home a Valley Vista League title. Girls tennis ended with a score of one and one. Girls golf ended with four and six. Girls flag football ended with two and one record, and won the Valley Vista League title in their very first competition of the season. And here are our final upcoming events. Next week, our school will be, will be going on fall break from November twenty-fifth through November twenty-ninth. Charter Oak Choir Department, Charter Oak High School Choir Department is performing their winter concert on December sixth, there's, December sixth and seventh. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
All right, audience. If you have something that is more important or more fun to do, inclusive of homework, now would be the time where you could leave the meeting. You are always welcome to stay.
Thank you for coming. Yeah, thank you. We, we don't take notes, and you're okay.
Thank you so much. Right.
Good job, Lila.
You can also listen in online.
Good job, Coach.
Folks in the back, we have some really great seats available now, if you'd like to move. No pressure, it's fine. Uh, we will move right along to our next item, which is our ROP report. Mrs. Flores?
Good evening, everyone. On the ROP front, the Sangabara Valley ROP is looking for a partner entity to focus on our, our strategic planning, uh, for the next five years, so more to come on that. Um, and we're also in the process of hiring a new Administrative Services Director, so I will give you an update once she's been hired.
Thank you very much. Next item is our superintendent's report. Dr. Jordan?
Okay, thank you, everyone. Good seeing everybody again. Um, just a couple of quick things. On November first, we were able to host our district-wide professional development day, uh, in which it was a student-free day. So I want to thank Ed Services, as well as all the school sites who organized the various professional development trainings that they did in the morning. Uh, teachers had the opportunity that day to receive training. Uh, they also had the opportunity to be able to do collaboration on their own. They had the opportunity to work in their classroom that day. Uh, and then also, we were able to host at Charter Oak High School an opportunity for lunch, where everyone came together, and we had the In-N-Out truck here, and Handel's Ice Cream, uh, donated ice cream that day to the district. So, uh, it was a really good way to end the week and start the month, and I just appreciate the work of everyone who was involved. Uh, we recently all celebrated Veterans Day. Uh, all of our sites had different activities that they have done to help, uh, honor our veterans, as well as our service members right now. And we truly appreciate all of that that is done. Uh, I know for me personally, both of my sons are veterans out of the Navy, and, uh, I know that that helped change and shape the men who they are today. So I appreciate, uh, the, the work on that. I know recently, um, at the middle school, our robotics team had the opportunity to compete. And I think, uh, the robotics team is working on getting those robots bigger, better, and stronger for the next round. But, uh, we do definitely support that program, as long as our other programs, and appreciate the work that's being done over there. Uh, and then today, our middle school, in conjunction with our high school, held another synergy day, where we were able to bring our kids in, and, uh, it's a really good day on, uh, supporting the mental health part of it. It's a good day of kids connecting with each other, because we know that when you connect with each other, you connect with school, uh, it goes earlier, what we talked about with attendance, you might just want to come every day. And so that's a big effort that our, our teams are, are doing on that. So I wish the board and everyone a great Thanksgiving. Uh, we will be closed all next week, so hopefully everyone takes advantage of the time off. And, and please take time to just remember the, the, the really great things that all of us are blessed with, and, uh, don't take advantage of those, because you never know when you lose that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We'll move along to our math placement policy presentation. Dr. Jordan?
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Kim. This is our annual update to the board that we are required to be able to present on math placement. Dr. Kim?
Thank you, Dr. Jordan, President McGuire, and, uh, Board of Trustees. This is, uh, again, as Dr. Jordan pointed out, a annual requirement that we were, we are reporting out our math placement outcomes for our incoming ninth graders through our schools. Uh, this is, again, required by law and education code. Uh, and this was designed, uh, back almost roughly ten years ago to ensure that students are entering their ninth grade math classes based on objective criteria, and not based on simple recommendations, or, uh, sometimes at some points, um, um, a lack of recommendations due to a course. So I'm gonna call up at this time our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, uh, Ms. Fares Mustafa, to report out to you our ninth grade math placement outcomes.
Thank you, Dr. Kim, um, Madam President McGuire, Vice President. Madam President McGuire, Vice President Peterson, Board of Trustees, Executive Cabinet, Committee members, thank you. I know you guys have the slides in front of you. We don't have them up here yet, but I will go ahead and take you through the Math Act of, California Math Act of 2015 has shaped our policy and how we report out and how we look at our ninth grade placement for math. Per our board-- Okay. Thank you, Lori. So per our Board Policy 61-52.1, we are committed to annually looking at our ninth grade placement for mathematics to ensure placement is based on an objective and academic measures. Our current Charter Oak ninth graders are placed in mathematics their freshman year from their end of course in eighth grade as well as their D2I-ready diagnostic scores. There's also an opportunity for students to be reevaluated with a placement test if that is needed. This ensures fairness for all of our students to be placed in the appropriate math class their freshman year. Our breakdown for this current school year, we have a total of 324 freshmen enrolled. Most of our students end up going into our Math 1 class, kind of like the old-school algebra, so we have about sixty-three percent of our freshmen going into Math 1. Those students that are a little bit more advanced, a little more honors, they are placed in Math 2, that's about twenty-nine percent of our students, and the last three math classes are special ed-focused. Math 1A is a special ed mathematics course that is slower in pace along with remediation for those that need a little bit more intervention. Intro to Math 1 is our SELPA-based program. Again, these are for students with disabilities. And functional math are students that are moderate to severely handicapped. And that is the conclusion of the report.
Are there any questions? Comments? Mr. Rose?
Math 1, Math 2, Math 1A, I think, um, they all differ in like the algebra 1 and algebra 2 because, you know, can confuse, people can confuse what it means by Math 1 and Math 2 and Math 1A. Introduction to Math 1, can you let, explain to the board what each cover?
So Math 1 is where most of our freshmen are placed. It's like our old-school algebra class. Our students that are more advanced are placed in Math 2. Our Mathematics 1A is for our special ed population, students with disabilities that are slower in pace, that's kind of like a replica of Math 1, but broken up with interventions for those students. Intro to Math 1 is for our special ed students, and it's a program through our SELPA. And functional math are for students who are moderately to severely handicapped, are functional math.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? For A through G, Math 1 and 2 are A through G, and then 1A and Intro 1 are not, right?
That is correct. Our functional math is, we approved those courses last year for our alternate diploma pathway for our kids to meet those requirements.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you very much. It looks like that's it. Okay, next up, we have public comment. Do we have any cards? Oh, we have Mr. Portillo on the topic of Jeanette Flores not-- declaring her reason for abstaining to vote on Athens Services contract. Mr. Portillo? Mr. Portillo, final call? Okay, moving right along. We will move to our next item, Discussion on Board Policy Revisions, First Reading. Dr. Jordan, could you please give us a brief summary of the four board policies?
I can. So for discussion night, this is our first reading. There are four policies for your consideration. The very first one, Board Policy 6173.1, that's titled "The Education for Foster Youth." This is, because as you know, the foster youth requirements and mandates from the state are changing constantly, so we are always trying to make sure that our board policy is reflective of this, and it just outlines the policies and the procedures that we follow when we intake foster youth and what we're required for servicing. That's the first one.
Do we have any questions or discussions on the first one? Moving along?
The second policy is the district-sponsored social media policy, Policy 1114. Especially now that we've hired Mrs. Hernandez and we're upping our game in social media newsletters and trying to portray the district with our communications, we wanted to make sure that we're aligning policy to social media, and so this just basically lays out the do's and the don'ts of social media, how you can use social media, and we just want to make sure we have policy in place.
Any questions there? Comments? Our student representatives were laughing at you for saying "upping our game."
I might need to hire you to help me up my game. I'm still not sure how you use the Twitter.
It's X now. Next policy?
Somebody's got to be a boomer. Next policy, Board Policy 9010. This is Board Policy on Public Statements. This coincides a little bit also with Ms. Hernandez, as well as what our policy is that in the event that communication needs to be taken to the public, who has the authority to be able to provide that communication, whether that's through the Board President or the Superintendent or both? And so this just helps be clear that if you are going to make public statements, this is the process, but also allows how the public can address the board and be able to have their right to the First Amendment to be able to say things.
And the final one? Oh, I'm sorry, is there any conversation there? Yes, Mr. Rose?
Jeff, could you repeat one more time what you said, but there was missing about-- yeah, go ahead, one more time.
This policy discusses a procedure in which if public statements are made, who on behalf of the board can make those? And this policy talks about it could be the Board President or the Superintendent.
Is it like involving texting and email in general and all that?
That actually falls in the next policy.
Oh. Okay.
The one I was referring to is public statements.
I want to mistake, sorry.
No problem. So you want to go to the next one? So the next policy that Mr. Rose is referring to is called Board Member Electronic Communications, 9012, and that is updating the procedures in regards to if you're using your social media or if you're communicating, realize that technology being involved does not allow especially board members that conduct business in that manner, that that would be in violation of the Brown Act, that all business discussions need to be held in a public meeting such as this.
Any comments there? Yes, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a concern about board member, we have five of us, where we use phone to communicate through the public, be like soccer game and maybe attending Charter Oak sport games. Information to share with parents and information to share with general public, I'm trying to see where we draw line with the boundary, you know, I'm talking about, you know.
So really good question. So for clarification, this policy basically outlines if you as a single board member are texting with anybody about board policies, board business, that's not illegal for you to do from the standpoint that you're not disclosing any closed-session information or any confidential information that pertains to the board. But if you're on a thread with, say, three of you and you're texting a community member or somebody, and the three of you now are talking about business, that would be in violation of the Brown Act. Or, and other clarification also, if, like, for example, if the five of you are on the same thread and it's information going out with no question saying, hey, there's a meeting tonight at 10 o'clock, we'll see you then, that's not a violation of the Brown Act. But if the thread goes to you saying, oh, there's an item tonight on the agenda, how are you guys going to vote tonight? That is a pure violation of the Brown Act. Mrs. Flores?
Got it, thank you.
And also just to reiterate, if we're in closed session discussing a matter, board members are not allowed to discuss those items with folks. I mean, we're not allowed to, if something happens in closed session, I can't be texting John Espinoza, this is what happened in closed session. So just to be clear that we shouldn't be discussing those matters with anybody in the public during our meetings, after our meetings, that is a clear violation of Brown Act.
That is actually punishable by law.
Yeah, that's criminal activity, so just to make that clear that that is also against the law.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson?
In clarification regarding the Twitter, as you said, or on X. If I'm at a game and I take a picture and I post something, say it's a score, that's not an issue. It's when we're talking business and you use it for the specific purpose of generating conversation amongst board members.
Correct, so that's a really good example that they talk about. You as a board member have the ability to post something on any social media. What you cannot do is, so as a board member, you have the right to say, I disagree with A. What can't happen on that thread, other board members cannot come back and comment and agree with you or disagree with you because now you're publicly outside of an agenda as you are now conducting business. So if you say, I don't like the old superintendent, you have the right to say that, but if all of you start weighing in on yeses and nos and this, or we're going to fire him, not fire him, whatever, that now is a violation of the Brown Act.
Is there any more discussion? Mr. Aguilar?
Doctor, sorry. Saw that look.
For Board Policy 1114, this is the one with the district-sponsored social media. I have a question kind of related just that kind of arises, not an issue with the language, the language is great. How is a district, official district, social media page designated or indicated compared to any other page that may be seeming to be related to the district?
I'll get clarification on that, but I do think, and I, Dr. Kim, if you've got the answer on this, I do believe that we do put something on there that this is the official X page of Charter Oak Unified. People can create things. There's also some other things that we want, if this policy is in place, we'll have Ms. Hernandez look also at all of our other district-sponsored site events too, to start looking to make sure that we're educating people on this, but more importantly, that we're also following the policy.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, this will be coming back for a second reading at a future meeting.
In December.
In December, thank you. Next, we'll move on to action items, and I will actually pass over Section A to Mr. Peterson.
All right, we're going to talk about Action Item A, Business Services, A1, Joint Use Lease Agreement with Charter Oak Day School. Can I get a motion, bring that forward?
So moved?
Give a second.
Oh, second the motion?
Any discussion?
I reviewed the contract itself. One particular item on the contract is 4.3 base percentage, and the 4.3, I lost the paper, I can't find it, is the 4.3 has to do with the increase of rent at an annual base. Jeff, can you clarify me what does that call?
Absolutely, and also just, I'm going to fill in, Mrs. Branford, she's at a conference tonight, so that's why she's not present, but what we were able to be able to look at that, and basically what that is, that's the Consumer Price Index, and that is something that is put out annually that allows public agencies like ourselves to be able to establish a price for rental. So that goes up actually each year. So in this case, in this particular contract, this allows us to be able to charge basically seventeen dollars and four cents per square foot of the usage of that facility. When that goes up again a year from now, that amount is in the contract stipulating that the district has the ability to increase the rent for the next year, and that takes place with all of our tenants that we do that annually.
In the past, have we used GPI to increase the rent?
Every year, we do the same thing with our other rental properties with our tenants. It's standard procedure, and that's in the contract to protect the district so that as inflation takes place and expenses go up, you're staying current to be able to offset those expenses.
Yeah, okay, my concern about the rent increase for the daycare is that I believe that once we increase the rent, the owner or the director of the Charter Oak daycare will pass the cost to the customer, which is the parents. Parents will have to pay more for the childcare. I would think that his or her approach of passing the costs down to the parents, so I, you know, that, I have an issue with this. I do, because it's called inflation. You know, inflation, we have a lot of problem with this country with inflation. That was the theme in the election, of this year's election, inflation costs the living. So I thought that when I looked at the item and I thought about it in a few days, so I thought maybe this is not a good time to have that in the contract. So I would like to know what irrational or justification to use GPI to increase rent.
Yeah, it's, first of all, a good point. However, if you look at it also from a business standpoint, no different than if we were landlords of a rental house or if we owned a shopping center that had tenants, that is done all the time in terms of raising rent, and obviously, as we know, when the rent goes up, the cost of the hamburger goes up, and all those things take place. So I understand your point. However, this is an outside agency who comes to us asking to rent our facility. They are not part of Charter Oak Unified in terms of us providing that education to kids, no different than that Sunrise Christian. They come to us asking to rent our facility. It's the cost of doing business, and also what wouldn't be fair is that if expenses went up and we didn't account for that part, then the district is going to spend more money out of their general fund to offset those expenses for an outside group to come use our facilities.
Yeah, I'm wary to have government agencies, just like school district, to charge, I mean, to increase rents every year because we're not in a business making money, but Because we're not in a business making money, but we, we charge, I mean, it goes past to the parents who live by check by check, that's my concern. Though if we extended sample, if we remove that from the contract, that's my opinion, to remove from the contract, we are sending the message out to the parent that we are concerned about their paycheck by paychecks. And we're helping, they're helping them. So, and ma'am president, I'd like to amend, make, make a motion to amend.
If I, if I, if I may. Mr. Rose, I have some data that will help put this in perspective. So based off of the-
Hold on one second. I think I forgot to formally recuse myself from this discussion, which is why I passed it over to Mr. Peterson. So he's the chair for this discussion.
Okay, all right, Mr. Peterson, I'd like to make a motion to amend the contract to remove 4.5, but approve the rest of the contract.
Dr. Jordan?
Yeah, if I may, I wanted to-
Well, we got to make a second motion too. We, I made a motion.
Oh, okay, I'll wait.
Is there a second on that? Seeing none, Dr. Jordan?
There's no reason to discuss because they all said no.
Well, I think for the public's sake too, if we're on the conversation, just to put this in perspective, looking at each year what the CPI increases and what that equals to them. In 2023, when this was in their contract, it's always been in their contract, it increased the square footage price by forty cents a square foot. In 2024, the CPI increase of 3.2% impacted the group by fifty-three cents a square foot. So just to put that in perspective, that it's not thousands of dollars that's being added. It's a, it's a pretty minimal cost.
And just to confirm, this is a private contractor and it's not affiliated with Charter Oak at all?
Correct, Charter Oak Day School is a private entity that rents from Charter Oak Unified. They're now, none of them are our employees, they're, they're basically tenants that provide a service into the community.
All right, they're not, I'm sorry, may I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Peterson? May I? Is the Charter Oak Day Center, is it not profiting organization?
I'd have to verify that, I do not know that answer off the top of my head.
I also noticed in the contract, rent increase, it's not only CPI, there's other item in the contract that, that can be sooner raising rents from the facility, right?
Well, in the contract, in addition to the base rent that we discussed, there's also a provision in there because they use our utilities to be able to pay a percentage of the utilities or if there's other things that we provide such as internet or custodial services, then they also pay for that. And just to add that they sit with the business office and at the expiration of all contracts, they negotiate all this and they, these are only in there because Charter Oak Day School has agreed that that's what they would pay to be able to use our facilities.
Dr. Jordan, can you confirm that we also maintain the building and all the needs, structural needs?
Correct, we clean the buildings if there's damage. As you saw, that there's been previous items to the board in the past. If there's damage to a room or a building, as the landlord, if you will, we're responsible for out of our pocket to fix the roofs, to fix something that gets broken. That's not the responsibility of the tenant.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Rose?
I have a comment. I'm concerned board member, the vote no. And we stand in obligation to remove the rent pay, rent increase every year to help the customer, which are the parents who have been, who are living by check, paycheck by paychecks. At this time, we should be starting doing this to show the rest of the community and other government agency as well business that we are moving forward to help reduce inflation. It may not have a big impact in, in, in the community overall, but we're sending a message to the community that we're doing everything we can to help parents and support them. So I'm hoping that the board member will vote no on it and move on. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Mr. Rose? Oh, I'm sorry, student reps. Miss, is there? Yes? Yes, Mr. Rose?
No.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion passes. Three, one with the two student reps also in affirm. Oh, and super.
Yeah, just for the record, I abstained from this vote and did not participate in the discussion.
That's why I skipped you.
Back to me, host. Next item, we have a word of bid 24-25-02, our roofing project over at the Adult Education Center. Is there a first, a motion, I'm sorry, and second?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Peterson raised his hand for motion, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Dr. Aguilar, is there any discussion? Roofing part, project at Adult Ed, any discussion? Mr. Rose? Discussion? No? Oh, okay. All right, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Valentine? Mr. Creighton? Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, motion passes. Five board members and two student representatives in the affirmative. Next item, school plan for student achievement. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Mrs. Flores, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Dr. Aguilar, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Ms. Valentine? Mr. Creighton? Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? I'm also a yes, motion carries, five board members and two student representatives in the affirmative. Next item, human resources, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Dr. Aguilar, is there a second? All right, for the approval of principal of Royal Oak, Dr. Jordan, do you have a recommendation for us?
I do, Madam President. I would like to recommend to the board Dr. Jennifer Powell as the next principal of Royal Oak Middle School.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Just like, thank Ms. Powell, Dr. Powell for putting him for this. My child goes there. And again, as I said back there, I apologize since my wife's running the PTA, but I appreciate you and looking forward to working with you.
Any other, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to add, I think Dr. Powell's done an outstanding job at Washington Elementary for a number of years now in our district. And I'm excited to have the potential of her bringing her expertise up to the middle school, I think that'll be great.
Thank you, Mrs. Flores?
Yeah, I echo all the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank you, Dr. Powell, for stepping into this role. And I see the happiest of all is Mrs. Maria Thompson in the back, who is cheering since, kudos to you as well for stepping up and doing five jobs. So, thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Dr. Powell, congratulations. Looking forward, we all looking forward to work with you. You do find Maria Thompson's, thank for stepping in. It would hopefully would, but I heard no, no eruption or any disaster or anything. It was a smooth transition. You stepped in gracefully to help Royal Oak, you've been there before and you care of it and we all appreciate you take care of it at this moment. Once again, congratulating your new position, looking forward to it, to your next visits.
Not so fast, Mr. Rose, we haven't voted yet.
You're right, I step ahead, did I?
So student representatives, remember this is a personnel item, so you won't be voting on this matter. I'm ready to call for the vote, Mr. Rose?
Definitely, yes, yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I am also a yes, congratulations and welcome. We're very excited to have you on the Royal Oak team. Next up, we have item D, Superintendent, is there a motion? We have Mr. Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Flores, I have a statement. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5493 subdivision C3, the board provides this oral summary of the salary and fringe benefits provided to the superintendent by way of the pending employment contract. The term of the new employment contract between the district and the superintendent, Dr. Danny Kim, is from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027. The new annual salary to be paid to the superintendent commencing January 1st, 2025 is $275,000 per year. And the other elements of compensation in this contract, in this contract includes district payment toward a health benefit package in the same amount as other full-time district management employees, 24 days of annual vacation, district paid dues for superintendent's memberships in the American Association of School Administrators, Association of California School Administrators, and one local organization, not to exceed $4,000 annually. Reimbursement for actual and necessary expenses, a tax-sheltered annuity in the amount of 3% of the superintendent's base salary. Life insurance in the amount of $300,000 with $200,000 payable to the superintendent's beneficiary and $100,000 payable to the district to defray the cost of hiring a new superintendent. The cost of an executive coach in the amount not to exceed $10,000. Okay, board, do we have any discussion? No discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rose?
Yeah, I, when, congress, I mean, I'm welcome you to the team once we voted, but there's someone, term in the contract, I, one of you know, I do not like in the contract, but personally, you're a perfect fit for our district and I'm looking forward to work with you coming on, I just want to let you know. Thank you, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Peterson?
Dr. Kim, although you're a Rams fan, I want to welcome you if, if you're voted on. But Mr. Rose said you're a great fit. The way we're moving since Dr. Jordan's been here, you're gonna, we're hoping it's going to continue going in that same direction. Looking forward to working with you. So, you're ready.
Mr. Aguilar?
I'll begin by commending my fellow colleagues on the board. You know, the process of searching and, and, you know, locating a qualified and competent and excellent superintendent. That's one of the most significant roles that we have in a district. And I want to thank the fellow board members for all of your hard work. A lot of good discussion, a lot of really good process, a lot of deep thought going into bringing forward a contract for consideration. And I believe that, you know, we found someone extremely qualified and, you know, looking forward to being able to approve a new superintendent to come and join the team. So, a lot of great things ahead of us.
Mrs. Flores?
I was going to speak afterwards to the vote, but.
This was if there was any discussion, I think we are doing after vote comments right now is what is occurring. Yeah, okay. All right, we can move. Okay, so we can go for the vote now. Again, this is a personnel item, I am going to skip you. Call for the vote, Mr. Rose?
No.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I am also a yes, motion carries with four yes, one no, and no votes from the student representative. I'd like to be the first to say, welcome to the team. We look forward to being able to work with you in this capacity at the start of the year and we're very excited for the next step in our school district. Now, Mrs. Flores?
Congratulations, Dr. Kim, looking forward to working with you. You are an exceptional leader and we're excited to have you in this capacity, so more to come, thank you.
Now I can say congratulations.
Congratulations, Dr. Kim, welcome aboard.
Congratulations, sir. And I think you should take his parking spot tomorrow.
Dr. Kim, do you have a wave or a speech for us this evening?
Not a speech, but just a thank you and an honor. I love this district, this is family, this is home. Don't take this for granted. So, and for the record, it's Rams, Dodgers, USC football, it's got a great game. But it's, it's an honor of a lifetime to be able to serve this history and this community. We've got 4,200 kids, they're going to get the best of me, the best of us, we've got 600 staff members. Again, they're going to get, get the very best of me and from us, so, an honor.
Thank you. Want some more clap, some more clap? Next up, we have consent calendar, are there any items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar? Mr. Rose?
Letter C, Human Resources, number four, approval of contract flow, education consulting, and cooperation.
Any other items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent with the exception of item C4?
So moved?
Is there a second? We'll call for the vote, Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. I'm sorry, student representatives, Ms. Valentine? Mr. Creighton? Okay, motion carries, five board members and two representatives in the affirmative. And now we'll go to item C4, approval of contract flow, education consultant. Is there a motion?
I move.
Mr. Rose, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Dr. Aguilar, discussion? Notice, oh, yes.
Yes, I, I read the contract itself and I noticed that the hourly rate for the consultant for $195 an hour. I want to know what the justification to charge, I mean, to pay the consultant $195 an hour.
Dr. Jordan?
Yeah, thank you, I'd be happy to answer that. The reason why we are recommending that the board approves this contract tonight is we have been short in a couple of our departments and Dr. Kim, who has been overseeing the Ed Services Department, we've also asked him the last two months to oversee the Human Resource Department. And then now that you've approved him as the superintendent, I think it would be unfair to him and the district to ask him to oversee three departments. So as we transition into our reorganization, we are trying to find someone that could come in that has the knowledge and experience in Human Resources to be able to come and assist the team to take that off of Dr. Kim's plate. And with the consultant coming in, it's a part-time, charged by the hour. You don't come in, you don't get paid. But we need to have a system in place where short-term the HR staff has the ability to go to somebody other than Dr. Kim to get direction and resolve. The consultant come in from Flow Education, he is a retired superintendent as well as a retired assistant superintendent, not retired, retired superintendent but also had eight years of experience as the assistant superintendent in HR. He currently trains across the state, human resource directors and assistant sups. So we're hoping that he could come in and do a couple of things. Number one, take items away from Dr. Kim. Number two, come in and also evaluate our systems and practices in HR to make sure that our policies are in place and that if there's recommendations on how to clean things up to be better, to help protect the district against any future litigations or any other type of issues, then he can come in and make Dr. Kim now those recommendations. You hire people that are expertise in something, unfortunately, there is a price tag that goes with that.
$195 an hour, that's, I mean, it's kind of high. I want to know that the normal rate to hire such a consultant with such background, human resource.
Actually, in that bid for, or when the price first came in, it started at $225 an hour. And so we had shared with them that we thought that was a little high and we've agreed to go to the $195 per hour. And, and I think in answer to your question, yes. No different than when the air conditioning breaks down and there's nobody out there to fix except one person, No different than when the air conditioning breaks down and there's nobody out there to fix it except one person, you're gonna pay whatever it costs them to come fix your air conditioner.
I understand that. I, I want to know if, I mean, this is gonna be a part-time position? Right, am I correct? This is a part-time position? Our learning rate, but no, I know health and benefits, no doubt.
No, it's an at-will position, the contract can be terminated at any point. Uh, it does not run through payroll, it is a 1099.
1099.
No different than other consultants. We use consultants like that all the time in all areas of our district.
Thank you.
You got someone you want to introduce?
Come on, Dad.
Uh, yeah, excuse, excuse me, excuse me, sorry. Mr. Peterson's out of order again, sorry. I, I know, we can do that afterwards, we're in the middle of a vote, Mr. Peterson, he, he loves this. Um, so is there any more discussion on item four?
I move to the vote.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move right along to a vote, Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Oh, okay, uh, Ms. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Creighton?
No.
No, Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Uh, we, Mrs. Flores?
Yes.
Mr., uh, Dr. Aguilar?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? I am also a yes. Next up, we have board comments. Since we have, uh, parents in the room, Ms. Valentine, would you like to make any board comments tonight?
I will. Thank you for coming to my board meeting, I appreciate it.
Mr. Creighton, any comments? Mr. Rose?
Thank you, okay. I have an opportunity to watch the video on district of choice. It was well made. Wow, I'm being impressed with the video. The only disappointment I see, I don't know how to describe this feeling, but the only thing that I, my interesting in the video that, uh, it was three different students in the video giving their opinion why parents should send their kid to Charter Oak. Wonderful. Really, but I'm concerned that the first section of the video show a football player and playing football. And then the second and third, it got to the academic courses, especially in the STEM and some kind of science, I believe. I, I feel, my opinion, uh, that should go first, the academic portion should go first in the video. That's my, my perspect, perspective. Because, uh, we should be not focus, focus on sports, I mean, we should want parent information what our academic course and look like. That's my opinion, but it was well made. Congratulations, I'm, I'm, uh, who made that video? Who made that?
That was orchestrated by our community resource, or our community, um, public community service. I can't remember her name now. Thank you, Emily Hernandez. Well, I always want to say PIO, but we don't call it the PIO.
Emily, uh, I wish she was here. But, that's okay, uh, it was well done, you know, very good. Maria Thompson, once again, thank you for stepping in for us at this critical moment, and now I'm looking forward to seeing Mr. Powell in Royal Oak. And when I be back, uh, teachers. One more day, right? One more day, Greg, one more day, right? One more day. Hang in there, we all need to hang in there, we can, you know, we work hard. And, and we deserve a break. So, and teachers out there enjoying a break, being a family, just like Dr. Jordan mentioned earlier in the meeting. Time to relax, refresh and recharge, and when we come back, we'll take a roll into, um, Christmas, which is coming next, right? So, hang in there and enjoy, teachers enjoy your short breaks, I will too, I will. And, um, thank you for coming to the meeting, and thank you for being here. And, uh, you all had a good break as well, looking forward to see you in, in the parade, right? We got a parade coming up, we're gonna join the parade. So we're looking forward to jump in, wave and be smile, and show the people Charter Oak is a great place to, to be. May I present it, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flores.
So I want to congratulate Ms. Pedrosi and the drama students for another amazing show. Fantastic, uh, welcome, Dr. Powell, and thank you, uh, Maria Thompson again for stepping in. Was it like riding a bike? Yeah, did you redecorate the restroom?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. Um, and also, thank you to Ms. Judy LaDon for also just, you know, continuing to support the students and the parents and the families. You guys didn't miss a step. So thank you, and a big welcome to Dr. Kim. Again, thank you for, for stepping in to be our fearless leader, excited to, for the future. Um, and also, Mr. Joey Straykula, who's been at Charter Oak since the beginning of, since we opened the district, right? Um, so, thank you for your leadership and continued support, and for all that you do on the student services side, and your leadership has just been, you know, instrumental to the success of our students, so thank you. And to your lovely wife, who is also here, so thank you. Uh, have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone, get some rest and relaxation, share some good recipes. Um, and welcome to Azuri's Dad, thank you for joining us. Our student reps are fabulous, so thank you all, I hope you'll be on the float with us. We promise Dr. Jordan won't talk about any media or Instagram or anything, okay? We promise. So hopefully you guys can join us on the float on, uh, December 5th?
6th.
6th, first Saturday in December. All right, so I hope you guys can join. Oh, well, hi Grandma, welcome. Thank you all and happy Thanksgiving.
Dr. Aguilar?
Thank you. Uh, let's see, uh, big congratulations to all of our sports, uh, teams and our athletes for completing an amazing season. Um, you know, it's such a blast for us to be able to watch the amazing things that all of these students are doing, uh, in addition on top of all their academic accomplishments, so, uh, that's really fantastic. Um, as we're wrapping up this semester, getting closer to the holiday season, we have also some, uh, performances coming up. We have our choir, as was mentioned earlier, doing their holiday concert soon, so I'm looking forward to that. Thanks for notifying us, uh, about those dates. Uh, I know they're also, I believe, gonna be performing at the Covina Christmas Tree lighting, which is tomorrow evening, so that'll be an opportunity for everyone to catch our choir there, which is fantastic. Uh, yes, also wonderful watching our drama program in Anything Goes, I thought it was fantastic. My son said it was probably the best production that he's seen out of Charter Oak so far. And I feel like he says that with every production, actually, right? So it just gets better and better and better. Uh, that was awesome, so those, those students did great. Uh, and I think they're having a workshop, the drama program's having a workshop soon, maybe next week, uh, for students from, all the way from 4th to 12th grade, uh, that might be interested in auditioning for their next production, which is Newsies, is that correct? Yeah, the high school one, but I think they're gonna have some kids from across the district in that, so that'll be really exciting. Uh, and then with our band program, they had the amazing opportunity to compete for their division championships in Southern California last Saturday, and they won the gold medal, so that's fantastic, so big congratulations to the band program. Um, looking forward to bringing them at a meeting in the future and recognizing them. And that earned them the ability to qualify for the state championships, which they will be traveling to this Saturday, so also want to wish them luck there, and, uh, I know they'll do a great job representing our district. Uh, I believe that's in Garden Grove, I believe that's in Garden Grove, Division 2A, uh, in the circuit called CSBC. Um, so that'll be outstanding. Uh, and then finally, uh, I think, as we saw today, we had the opportunity to place really fantastic leaders into really important positions. And I just think that it really highlights the level of leadership and development of leadership that we have within our very own district here. Uh, to be able to look internally and find people that are really excellent for each of these positions. So, again, congratulations to, uh, everybody we brought on board, Dr. Powell especially, Dr. Kim, of course, so, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, ma'am. And continuing on with the, uh, VAP accolades, last week, I had the opportunity, oh, it was told by my wife, but we chaperoned, uh, a DTASK, uh, event in Culver City. So, I was out in Culver City on a Saturday for about 14 hours watching various, uh, schools from throughout Southern California participate in, uh, in short little scenes that had different themes. Some of the themes included the students writing their own, uh, play, and that was interesting to watch. But, uh, overall, our school Royal Oak Drama Program got 4th place in the, in the program, which was awesome. But even more importantly is, one group out of every participating school, one specific, uh, group received an award where they're going to Sacramento to perform their play on the, uh, steps of the Capitol. And that was pretty impressive, because you're talking, there had to be at least 100 different acts going on there, and for that group to be selected is just phenomenal. It's, uh, it was actually a scene from On the Waterfront, it was pretty good, they're pretty good. It was impressive. Uh, but in following up with what all of you have said, this is an important time for our district with the transition with Dr. Kim coming in, and, you know, I think you're well-prepared, we're looking forward to it. It's good for our district to continue in the motion that we're going, uh, and I'm really looking forward to working with you on that. Adult Ed, is it, did he leave? He just left? There's a great big sign down on San Bernardino Road, it's phenomenal. Advertising all the good things going on at, uh, our Adult Ed program. What else did I have? Applebee's, or our drama program's having an Applebee's fundraiser, I think on the 6th of December? Something like that? Uh, it's somewhere around the Christmas parade day. And they're taking reservations now, so, we gotta get that on the website somehow. And what else? I am looking forward to Thanksgiving break, Mr. Rose? Like I said, I have a half-day tomorrow, so I can't wait to get going and get it that done with. Not that I don't like my kids or anything like that, but I just need a break. But I hope everyone takes this time during, uh, Thanksgiving to enjoy the, what we have here in Charter Oak. We have a phenomenal district, we're very fortunate, uh, we have a great set of leaders. We got the mayor of the city, Mr. Straykula back there, who's a, who's a, just phenomenal. He's, he's excellent in what he does, uh, and he's continuously is impacting our students and our staff, so we're very thankful that we have him. But I hope everyone enjoys the Thanksgiving and get ready for Christmas. Welcome, sir, your daughter's phenomenal. Thank you for letting us borrow on Thursdays. There you go, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Um, I'll wrap things up by again saying congratulations to Dr. Powell, to Dr. Kim, and to Mr. Straykula. Um, I think that it's really important to note that not only do we celebrate our employees here, but to have them recognized, uh, by the county, uh, as an excellent administrator is very important. Um, and I think we need to continue to make sure we uplift our staff members when that happens. Um, Sunday, November 24th, uh, is Operation Gobble Drive, uh, where we are partnering, um, with, uh, the Assembly, the Office of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio to distribute turkey and vegetables and some sides to community members. Um, it's a very huge event, uh, drive-through event. Um, not only can you come get a free turkey, but if you don't need one, you can come volunteer, uh, and bring your children. It's fun for the whole family, so hopefully we see you there. Again, that's happening at 9:00 to 12:00, and if you want to volunteer, show up around 8:00 AM, um, and we will be able to put you to work there. Um, we missed, uh, well, I missed being able to say Happy Veterans Day to everyone, and a special shout-out to my husband and my father who served, uh, the, in the United States Air Force. Um, great news, FAFSA is finally open. So if you are a senior going to college, it is time to fill that out. A pro tip, do it before Thanksgiving, because the system is likely to crash immediately after, because that's when everyone else is gonna go hit it. Uh, speaking of free money, my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, has a scholarship for young women in our school district. Um, you have to be, uh, attending a two-to-four-year college, uh, 3.0 GPA here in high school, 500-word essay, and, uh, March 8th is the deadline to apply. If you have questions, go to scholarship@pvadst.org. Uh, December 7th is that parade we were talking about. Um, Azuri and Logan, if you'd like to join us, please make sure you get the forms from, uh, Ms. Micacel so that you can complete the, all the forms and stuff. Uh, we hope you join us. Um, lastly, uh, I'm really grateful for our teachers and students and the staff that make Charter Oak a really special place, a unique place, uh, for our community. Um, and I just look forward to this break like everyone else, so I hope that you all enjoy your time off. If you have the whole week off like some of these folks, not me, unfortunately, um, but have fun with that. I, I just got the two days. Oh, you guys aren't off, you're not off a whole week? Thank you. Fantastic. Then these folks get the whole week off. Um, our next meeting, hold on, let me find the paper. I don't even have the last page. December 19th, same time, same place. Uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned at 8:15.